If you please stand for the indication delivered by George Studer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, it's another day that we're thankful to be alive and to be in this town of Fredericksburg in Gillespie County. We are so thankful that we want to give back. And this morning, we look to you for how to do that. We ask you to lead this council in cooperation and understanding and wisdom. And help them to make good decisions that are not only good for now, but for the future for our community in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We want to welcome Bradley Andley, who's filling in for Mick McCamey today. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Do we have any ceremonial matters or those are otherwise? All right. Council comments?
Good morning and Merry Christmas to everyone. It's been a busy last couple of weeks for everyone on council. I just wanted to say extend my appreciation to Chief Bizzle, our city secretary, Assistant Secretary, for helping council pull together the first ever breakfast and city appreciation and appreciation for the staff and Christmas breakfast. I think we served close to 200 breakfast tacos and Tony and I had some questionable quality on the pancakes, probably close to 300, served 130 people. So it was a lot of fun. So we just appreciate sincerely appreciate our city staff. On the CVB front, we had our third of fourth tourism master plan steering committee meeting on December 12th. And I think, I think if I can echo what the sentiment in the room was really encouraging a CVB shifting from tourism marketing to tourism management. And that kind of broadens the scope of what CVB does and allow more of that a little bit later on. Tannenbaum Ball, just a shout out to Tannenbaum for an amazing event, Gillespie County Historical Society, sold out event. 240 plus attendees at that event that night, total proceeds over $360,000. Absolutely amazing event. So hats off to those folks. And some of the best news I've come across in quite a while was the Little Grasshoppers, if we're all familiar with the childcare. They had to shut down here recently is now becoming Little Peaches Learning Center. Marla Compton and her husband are relocating from, I think, Curville back to Fredericksburg. They're going to be taking care of our kids ages from six weeks to four years old. And they believe that they'll have a capacity of about 50 children to take that they can take care of. Some city inspections are pending, so I know that we're going to jump on that. And they were hoping to be open by the third week in January. So some good news for us all. Thank you.
We, yesterday, we had a special meeting at the council on the Food and Wine Fest. Want you to know that we continue to work on it. We have counseled it for 24, but we're trying to get a group together and get that thing going again, maybe larger, hopefully larger. So that then the other thing is if you haven't noticed, we're down to one bus on Main Street, got rid of the three others. So we're working on it.
The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee met and we have reviewed the draft of the Parks Master Plan as well as the Comprehensive Plan, providing edits back to Anna that will then culminate in a redraft, right, that will come before us. Well, I guess planning and zoning first and then us. Is that right?
We'll do a joint meeting of the two.
Yes, perfect. And then the emergency alert system. A lot of folks got emails if they were already signed up, the old way of doing things, but now the new way. You have to opt in, you text F B G T X to 38276 and then you are on the list to receive any emergency alerts. It's a really cool system. I'm grateful to our staff who's been working on getting that together.
The Santa Fly In was a huge success. I was not able to be there. I was out of town. But from my understanding, they had a record crowd and the weather was perfect and it was somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people. So it was awesome event. Charter Review Committee, we've pretty much wrapped up changes to the charter and we're looking to have a public hearing on that mid-January. So more to come, come on when that meeting will be. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Item number six is a consent agenda, includes three items. Consider the approval of the minutes to the December 5th regular meeting. Consider the approval of Stephanie Horus, Wesleyan Health Nurse, to be appointed to a three-year term expiring December 26th. And the reappointment of Amy Montgomery, an RN with Methodist Hospital Hill Country, that another three-year term to expire in December 26th. And this is to the Gillespie County Health Board. And the third item is to consider the approval of the reappointment of Brad Harden and Jim Giraud to another three-year term expiring December 26th to the Economic Development Board. Counsel, what's your will?
Make a motion. We approve items A, six, A, B, and C.
Second. Motion second to approve this consent agenda item altogether. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item seven, resolutions, ordinances, and public hearings. Number A, consider a request by Earlene Lund for a land use change and zoning change at 305 East Highway Street. Ms. Lund, I see that you're here. Would you like to make the first presentation?
I'm not Earlene Lund. I'm Susie Prater. I'm hair administrator.
All right.
And we purchased the park about, we're almost at the two-year point. And as part of purchasing the park, we thought we were already into the short-term rentals and that because that's what's talked about. We're not in it to be a short-term rental facility. We want to accommodate the up-and-coming trend of our RV cameras. In this generation, it's just come out in a survey the last year that multi-generations go camping. Normally, it's Grandma and Grandpa, the adult children, and even some of the grandkids come camping. And they all come in the RV, but then when they get here, Grandma and Grandpa want someplace that's easier for them to sleep and easier and close to stay where they get to see all the fun that the grandkids are doing. And so that's what ours is to just have a few of them to accommodate along with our campers and our RVers to come in and have a place to stay so that they're not crowded. Even though a motorhome or an RV says it'll sleep six, if you've ever tried to put six people into a 30, 35-foot RV, it gets really cramped. So our purpose for doing the short-term rentals and doing the rezone is just to accommodate the current trends and the needs of our folks that come in and already stay with us. Do you have any questions?
There may be a question or two later. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. So as she mentioned, this is a request for a land use change and a zoning change. The land use classification is currently industrial and that would change to commercial. And a zoning change from M2 manufacturing to C2 commercial for the property located at 305 East Highway. Sorry, we are having some technical difficulties, but do you have it on your screen? You can see the exhibits that show the zoning map? So the property is currently operating as the Fredericksburg RV Park, which obtained a conditional use permit to operate as a campground back in the early 2000s. The new owners purchased the property in 2022 and would like to add two STR rentals to the property, which the M2 zoning does not allow and would require a zoning change from M2 medium manufacturing to C2 commercial to operate the STR facility in addition to the existing campground use already established on the property. Land uses surrounding the property include industrial to the west and commercial to the north, south, and east. Zoning to the west is M2 medium manufacturing and to the north, south, east, it is C2 commercial. The uses found in C2 commercial are compatible with the area and there have been no letters in support or opposition received for this application. The desire to have STRs on the property is consistent with the current use of an RV park. STR uses are limited to a total of eight units. Anything above eight units would be considered a hotel motel use, which is also allowed by right in C2 zoning. Planning and zoning recommended approval on December 6th with one vote against finding that the STR use compatible with the existing and future use of the property and the change to C2 compatible with the area. Staff recommends approval of the request, requested land use, and zoning changes. The property abuts C2 commercial and is a natural extension of the existing zoning found to the east and north. In addition, it would be a create a cohesive zoning block, given that the property across East Highway is also zoned C2 commercial. The existing CUP for the campground will stay in place.
All right.
I move that we go to public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to go regular in the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone here to speak on this issue?
I move that we go back to regular session.
Aye. Motion second to go back into regular. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Counsel, any questions or comments for Representative or Anna?
Go ahead. Question. I did sit through planning and zoning session that evening, so I have reasonable background. So based upon the business plan, it doesn't sound, this sounds like it supplements additional overnight stay facilities for people that are coming in anyway. So the question I have really goes to parking. Do we have ample parking? We're not going to create a situation with parking if we do this.
And they will have to go through the permitting process. So they will have to apply for the STR permit and meet the requirements of the permit. So they'll have to provide their parking and do the whole thing. This is just giving them the ability to apply for the permit. It doesn't guarantee it, but it gives them the ability.
What's the total headcount for the STRs you're describing there? All right. Okay.
Where is that building? Is it in the back or in the front? Is that why those spaces are empty right now?
No, those spaces. Those spaces that are empty are because they are only for short RVs. You have to be about 27 feet or below to fit into those RV sites and be able to park a vehicle with it. The trend of most RVers that are coming in now are anywhere from 35 to 45 feet. So they don't fit up in that area. So that 90% of the time, those six sites are vacant because of that.
And that like the snowbirds.
And what?
The, the snowbirds that come in.
And they have the big units.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they're in the back.
Yes.
So assuming we approve this land use and zoning change, it would then have to be an STR facility, right, that they would be applying for since there's two, you're trying to do two units in that one building?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
So what you're asking, can they do it through the entire place? Or is it just limited to those two units?
Right now, it'd be the two units that they have, but they could build up to eight units by right. And if they go over eight units, then it becomes a hotel motel use, which is also allowed by right in C2.
And we're not looking to go over the eight units. If the trend continues and it gets heavier, because a lot of the seniors that are traveling with their adult children are younger and they want to have a place to stay. With those six small sites, sites could then be converted to an STR, but that would be the maximum that we would go. We do not want to lose our RVers and we are still mainly, we want to accommodate our RVers that come in.
Yeah, until you sell it and the next owner, right?
Well, if it's limited to that eight, then they have to go through the process and do what they need to. But my owner, unless somebody comes in and offers her an awfully awful lot of money, we love the Fredericksburg area. And with, this is our second park in the Fredericksburg area and we just enjoy this area.
Well, the RV parks, as we know, are continuing to grow in this community. So.
Yes.
Anna, are there other RV parks that have STR permits? I'm just curious if, I just didn't, I hadn't thought of this before. I'm just curious if we need to look at all of the city limits RV parks and if we need to address anything with STR permits or a different classification of STRs within, you know, if people are renting out an RV as an STR. I'm just curious.
And this one came in as a compliance. I believe our code enforcement officer found that they had been, I guess, maybe renting and maybe even remitting hot. And that is the big difference between an RV and STR is that they do have to collect hot on the STR units. To your question, it would depend to get, we would have to see where the RV spots, where the RV campgrounds are operating and what their base zoning is. Again, because if they already have that C2, then they're allowed the STR facility by right. But if it's another manufacturing, so we could look at those.
So have you been operating the, the front building as?
No, as soon as we found out that it was, it was not in compliance and what was required, we shut it down. We have a sign on the front that says it is inactive and not a, not available for use by anyone until, and that we'll let them know when it does come again.
Okay, so it was being used as an STR.
It was because we were not aware that we were manufacturing. We thought hotels across the street, you know, STRs had been all around that area. And we researched it and we looked into permits for what was needed to be done. And at no point were we told stop, put on the brakes when we were doing that. Until we, they, the code enforcement office officer came out while he was on site. My manager called me in California, told me what was going on. As soon as we found out, we went to get permits and was told that we couldn't get permits. And at that point, we shut everything down and said, no more rental of it until we get through all of this procedure and get our permits going.
How long has it been used as an STR?
I'm saying maybe three months, four months, if that.
So if we approve this, they must start collecting hot on those two units.
We have already, the times that we did rent them, we did collect the hot tax on it and pay it.
Yes, that'd be part of the permit.
All right. Anything else?
I'll just add a recommendation is when we approve the zoning, the ordinance for the actual zoning, I recommend we, if you choose to approve, recommend that you include in the motion to continue the, the CUP use for campgrounds. Just if you'd be good, that would be covered second of all.
Continue the use for the campground specifically?
That's correct. The CUP for campground.
Okay, explain why.
I, I just want there to be no, no question that this zoning, zoning change doesn't erase that. I, I agree. It's still in existence. It doesn't specifically touch it. I think it would be wise to have a record.
To apply that condition.
Correct. So that it's, it's known on the record that that will continue. There's no question.
Thank you for that. Do we need to have two motions on this?
Yes, you have a land use and a zoning change. Land use.
Whichever you prefer.
Land use. Land use.
Land use. Excuse me. One other question. You have not received any letters of pro or con.
Correct.
No motion? P and Z approve this unanimously?
There was one vote in opposition.
One?
On the CUP for the campgrounds, is that in the zoning record?
Yes, it is.
Not the?
Not the land use.
I make a motion to approve the land use for Z 2325 as presented.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion to approve the zoning with a note that, that CUP for campground stays in place as presented.
I second that.
Motion second. Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for representing Ms. Lund. I appreciate that. You live in California? Just popped over for the day? Go ahead. Merry Christmas to you. All right. Item 7B is consider the approval of resolution, Resolution 202321R, approving the acquisition and lease purchase financing of public equipment and authorizing the execution and delivery of documents requiring connection with bank funding LLC. Krista?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor and counsel. We, we put the bidding out, published in the newspaper. We received three bids and the lowest bid came in with Cogent Bank, who we are currently under contract with for our financing for last year's budgets of equipment. So we have, had it set up for three years like we normally do. The fire truck is not included. We may be looking at that mid-year. So that's the only equipment that we didn't, didn't include in the funding. And basically, we're already under contract with Cogent through 2026 currently, so we wouldn't be extending the contract. We would just be adding new equipment to their, their lease terms. So staff is recommending approval of the lease purchase financing with Cogent Bank.
Those are interest rates. How much is it approved?
Last year's rate was 3.8.
2.8?
Three. 3.8.
3.8.
This year's 4.65.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was this year's?
4.65.
So I'm assuming anybody knows that, is that the way interest rates are going, I guess that's, and they bid low, right?
The other bids that we got were 5.49 and 5.3.
Yeah.
So on the capital assets that were under the prior 3.8 percentage rate, do those stay in place?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't adjust them up to 4.6?
She knows it.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Want to move this?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-21R as presented.
Motion second to approve this resolution of the acquisition of lease purchase finance, et cetera, as presented. Further discussion questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Krista. All right, we're now at item eight, other action items and updates. A, consider taking action regarding the city of Fredericksburg sponsoring the 175th anniversary event at Fort Martin Scott. Good morning, Andrea.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. This is an item we're bringing back that was presented at the last council meeting for official action on the city sponsoring the 175th event at Fort Mark Scott, which will take place on March 8th and March 9th. One of the questions was the budget the last time, so we've come up with a budget of $9,500 would be the proposed budget for this event. We do have funds available in the tourism fund to cover those expenses. Dr. Hammerson is here as well in case he has anything he'd like to add or to help answer any questions.
So it's going to be more than $500?
Yes.
That coming from a banker?
Yeah.
Was that pitched at $500?
There was mention of potential grants. Do you know potential sources for those?
I'd have to turn to Dr. Hammerson if he had some grant opportunities for this event.
And what was, what was the number again?
$9,500.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The items that were included when we had our last in-progress review included the city had agreed and the lawyer had agreed that it was legal to do so, that the city was paying for the cost of the military banned overnight accommodations while they're here. They have a reduced rate from the hotel to be able to do that. Paying for the cost of the insurance, the additional insurance for the city, since this is a city event on city property. The cost of renting the porta-potties while we're here. And then additional money coming out of the souvenir fund that already exists for Fort Martin Scott in order to be able to purchase some items for that. No grants at this particular point in time. We hope that that'll be something we can do in the future, but not for this particular event.
There will be some revenue return on the sale of merchandise, correct?
Absolutely. And it goes back to the general fund.
Yeah.
And the, we're benchmarking a larger dollar cost for porta-potties and hand wash stations. Because we don't, right now, we don't know how many tourists we're going to have that are here. The mark on the wall right now is about 500. However, that's the beginning of spring break weekend. And I believe from what Grayton said, last year, there were something like 50,000 people in town during that week. So the number may be higher. And the number of porta-potties that we have is based upon the number of individuals that are going to show up for the event.
No, you're at your early stage, but are you having the Indians come in?
Those are being done through the former Texas Ranger Association as part of their Celebrate Texas event that's going to take place that weekend. So that's separate from this. This is the advertising through the Committee on Visitor Bureau is separate from this. And the newspaper pull-up section is being done by the newspaper, separate from this. This is just the cost for things because it's a city function if you approve it as such.
This is the weekend prior to the official spring break. And so we're expecting families with children and have this to advance you about the appropriate marketing for that report.
Excited to have it.
So there are no, there's no budget for speaker or appearance fees?
No, the individuals that we have had, that we are informally have put on their calendars that we will formally invite after the beginning of the new year. Our government officials, military officers, et cetera. And we don't pay for them to come. They come on their own. Individuals that are coming like Ted Hollingsworth, who was the first curator here in 1990, he's going to pay his own way to come here.
I'll make, make a motion to approve the city sponsoring the 175th anniversary event at Fort Martin Scott.
Second.
You want to specify the appropriation?
For the budgeted amount of $9,500.
A motion second to approve this under that number and city sponsorship. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Andrea and Eric. I want to commend you publicly for all the work you've been doing to make this happen. And I know you have a, a great partner in Carol to do this as well. So thank you. Item eight B is to consider the conveyance of right-of-way of roadway easement agreement at 407 East Orchard. Mr. Canazy?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Chris Canazy, Director of Public Works and Utilities. This morning, I bring to you a little bit of a unique situation. There are some unique situations that we find in some of the older parts of town. This is one of those. This is the consideration of the conveyance of some right-of-way. But we are retaining a roadway easement agreement as part of this. So I know that the screen isn't working here in front of you, but if you'll flip to page 52 of your agenda packet, there's a survey. That survey, I'll just kind of describe what's going on with this particular property. This property is located at 407 East Orchard Street. Or if you're on page 52, which is the survey provided by Mr. Lemmons, you can see there along the front edge of East Orchard, a couple of encroachments. The red line shows essentially where the right-of-way line is currently. You can see the covered rock, the outline of the structure is in that light blue color. You can see a couple of encroachments of about five feet, just under five feet. This was recently picked up in a survey that was done as part of a current transaction that's in place. It's unique because there's been a number of surveys in the past. There's been title policies issued on this particular piece of property and this has not been caught in the past. So with this recent survey done by Mr. Lemmons, it showed these encroachments. The, the property owner and their attorney approached the city on the proper ways of, of correcting this per se. I would note that East Orchard is curved on both sides. The street is paved. It's a developed neighborhood. The city doesn't have any plans to do any roadway improvements in this area. So when approached by the, the property owner and their attorney on ways to correct this, the conveyance of the right-of-way would be the proper way of doing so. The, the dark blue line there is essentially ten feet from the, it kind of splits that, that twenty-foot right-of-way conveyance in half. So the ten feet between the, the pavement and, and, and the split of the twenty-foot right-of-way conveyance is essentially where we're, we're retaining that roadway easement agreement. That would still keep the fifty-foot right-of-way, which would be a typical right-of-way that we would get as part of, part of the subdivision. So we would retain basically fifty feet of right-of-way as part of this. The, the documents have been prepared by the property owner's attorney. The city attorney has reviewed those and agrees with the, the legal documents. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this, this subject property. City staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way conveyance and the ten-foot roadway easement agreement as presented.
So is the blue line going to be the new property line?
So the, the property line would actually go all the way out to the, the darker red line, but we would retain an easement between the blue line and the red line.
That's what I was wondering, you retain an easement?
That's correct.
Chris, I'm just looking at the one corner intersecting the bottom right, I guess. It's pretty tight on the easement. Are there any existing buried underground cables, et cetera, that this causes issue with?
Well, you can see the power line, that, that's an overhead power line there. We do have city utilities, which is another reason we wanted to retain an easement in this area. But it doesn't conflict, the, the conveyance of the right-of-way doesn't conflict with any existing utilities. We, we retain what we need to retain as part of this agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the conveyance of right-of-way and roadway, ten-foot roadway easement agreement at four oh six East Orchard.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve this conveyance. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go to eight C, Mr. Ferguson, I apologize.
Well, I did?
Yeah. I was sorry.
It's four oh seven.
Correction, four oh seven. Thank you. Chief. Mr. Ferguson, I overlooked you. Are you, you declining? Did we do what you like? Okay. I'm glad. Thank you for being here, sir. Eight C, consider the approval of the extension of the city of Fredericksburg investment policy. Krista.
So there are no changes proposed this year for the investment policy. David Kellam and I just recently attended investment training. And so we're up to speed with any recommendations from Texas Municipal League. Our policy is, is well covered with, with what it needs to have. We are diversified. We, we know that our first objective is safety. So I don't feel like we need to make any changes. And I just wanted to remind you all that you do receive the portfolio activity in our quarterly reports. We did very well in twenty twenty-three. We had over a million dollars in interest income. And hopefully we'll, we'll do the same again this year. I looked this morning, our rate is currently at five point three percent. So we're still going to be doing strong with our interest.
So that's impressive. And I'm going back and with memory, which is dangerous sometimes. But when we were talking about total interest that we accrue, it was, I thought it was in the four to five hundred K. So did I miss that or?
That was for general fund.
For general, okay, thank you for correcting. Thank you. That's good, great job.
So just recommending that we keep the existing investment policy. And as any new changes come on board, that's recommended through the Texas Municipal League and we'll, we'll make changes as necessary. Thank you for your stewardship, Parklands. Appreciate it.
Chris, I have a couple of, just quick questions. There's a lot of keeping up with things in this policy. Who are your finance managers that help you?
So right now, the finance manager is David Kellam. It's just the two of us. I hope to maybe someday in the future have another finance manager that's already on staff.
Do you seek training or do they seek you? I mean, there's, there are requirements for training so often. Is that you personally or your partner?
Yes, yes. Every two years, I'm required to do ten hours. So normally, there's more than that between the different conferences.
Okay. So this, this has been working for us, obviously. Safety, liquidity, and you.
Yes.
Okay. So this is a continuation?
Sure.
I just need to be clear, make sure I'm clear.
Assume you're getting a ten percent return rate right now. Five percent is the new ten percent.
All right, you want to move this?
A move that we approve the extension of the city of Fredericksburg investment policy.
Second.
Motion second to approve the extension of this policy as presented. Thank you, Krista. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item nine is the city manager's report. Mr. Bailey?
Mayor, Council, we, we're having technical difficulties and we need to reboot our system in order to see the presentation. What are net, you might entertain about a five-minute recess.
So that we get this fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll recess for five.
All right. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
We are at the city manager's monthly update.
Hey, Mayor, Council, thank you. We'll work through my monthly update again. For those of you that haven't seen that or may be watching or listening in, we cover development-related items, city projects. We have a financial update, and then we have a catch-all miscellaneous section, ED Fire EMS and so forth. So getting right in, we had mentioned our comprehensive plan a little bit earlier. I have Anna to give just a brief update on the schedule and next steps.
Good morning. So the, the comp plan, CPAC meeting last, met last week and had feedback. And so there are some changes that they're making to some of the content. So a little bit maybe more substantial than they anticipated based on the initial schedule. So we are accepting all the comments from the CPAC until the end of the year. I'll be submitting those to half. And then they'll need a couple of weeks to, to then essentially create the, the final draft. And then we'll make that public to the, make that public to everyone and start asking for feedback. And then we'll have the joint meeting for, for city council and P and Z. And so that's looking like that will be early February at this point. We've got a follow-up meeting with, with half tomorrow afternoon. So I confirmed that up a little bit because we will want to get that on your calendar pretty soon. So we can start planning for that. And then the joint meeting, and then you guys will make a recommendation there if there's anything major to change. And then P and Z will meet individually for their recommendation and then ultimately to you guys for adoption. So that could be pushed back as far back as, as March. But at this point, we don't want to rush through. We want to make sure we, we're getting the document we want. So it's, you know, it's looking like it's been delayed, but it's just, just keeping, working on it. And there have been comments every time we review it, there, there have been some, some changes. So a work in progress.
Okay. Moving on, development activity. And we had mentioned last time that in twenty twenty-three, we have generally seen a little bit of a slowdown compared to the last two years, which were a little bit higher than normal. So we're more or less getting back to normal in terms of site plans, just the activity zoning, flats and so forth. Getting into a little bit more detail, you can see the total number of commercial building permits here. Again, how we compare this year to previous years going back to fourteen. Single-family residential subdivisions, and this number hasn't changed in terms of the total lots available. However, we do have a lot of activity or some activity in the Friendship Oaks subdivision, where we have twenty houses that have been permitted. You can see how that is reflected in the overall number, number of single-family residential building permits.
Right there, I would say none of those have been CO'd yet. They're having issues with the CTEC. CTEC is providing the electricity there. So there's issues that's beyond our control, but we've not been able to complete any of those. But they are submitting about five every two weeks. So we're, I think, reviewing five more right now. So that twenty will soon jump to twenty-five, doing them at five at a time.
Can you speak to the, the, the cost of the homes? Have you heard?
I've not heard officially, but I mean, it is a mud. It's our first and only mud. We've, we've heard that that mud cost is going to be about a dollar. So that's something that those individual property owners will be paying, paying yearly. I'm, I've heard that they're doing something very similar in Kerrville, but that Kerrville's coming in at a lower, lower price point. But we'll, we'll, and they're doing marketing. I don't think I've seen any advertising prices yet. Keep an eye on that.
So that one dollar will be added to the tax rate, correct?
Correct.
And I'll talk just a little bit toward the end of the presentation. I think the average four hundred fifty thousand dollar home with the city's tax rate generates about, I want to say seven hundred forty-two dollars, just to give you an idea what that, that one dollar tax on the tax rate, how that would impact that, that taxpayer in that subdivision. Okay, moving on again. Residential building permits, new construction. You can see going back to twenty sixteen that we were up and down averaging about seventy or so with an increase in activity. During the pandemic, at the end of the pandemic, again, we are, would be back down to that average or be close to that, with the exception of the additional homes in that particular subdivision we were just discussing. So we're up to eighty-five. Probably increase that just a little bit beyond that number close out twenty-three. So the multi-family portion of construction activity that you, that you see going on is very substantial. We've mentioned before that nothing had been constructed really since twenty nineteen. We had about eight hundred units available for, for rent. Apartments were rent. New construction beginning in twenty twenty-two through twenty-three. We have five hundred twenty currently under construction. And you can see the eighteen forty-six luxury apartments, the very large complex off Friendship Lane. We did get some rental numbers back for those units. A one-bedroom, one-bath at seven hundred three square feet, fully renting for fourteen hundred thirty-one dollars per month. Two-bedroom, two-bath or two-one, a little bit over a thousand square feet, just shot two thousand dollars a month. So these are under construction, five hundred twenty. And this number continues to increase. When we started giving this report, I think we had seventy units earlier this year. We're up to a hundred thirty-three completed.
The Algorita, the first one, this one just moved over from under construction, under construction to recently completed. So that's just past Saint, past Saint Vincent's, the old Tricare facility. So they had the old Tricare facility that, which opened up earlier. And then they just opened up the, the new construction, the two-story. So that was a big bump from under construction to, to completed.
You can also see some of the rates here.
What is across the street, across Live Oak from Algorita? What is that called?
So if you go back to the previous, that one, I think we're calling West Live Oak duplexes. I don't know if it has a formal name yet, but that's what we're, we're calling it.
What, what is the apartments across from HEB?
That's Barron's Park apartment.
Barron's, do we have any kind of pricing? I've been asking for a little while on that one, any idea of pricing on that one yet?
No, and what, this is just me going online yesterday, like apartments.com. Because of course, most of them just say call for pricing. So this is what I was able to, to find relatively easy.
Thank you. And approved for construction not, not start, construction not started. It was point six hundred fifty.
And of those, the Laura May on the bottom will most likely be the first to, to break ground based, just kind of on the activity we're seeing.
And then a summary under construction recently completed, approved not started for a total of, a little bit over thirteen hundred three multi-family.
Clinton, what's our number now? That are, that are open and rented?
Hundred thirty-three?
Right, so we had, again, at the end of twenty nineteen, just, just over eight hundred with about a hundred percent occupancy, ninety-eight percent occupancy. And you can see that five twenty under construction. We've added one thirty-three with another six hundred fifty for construction. So we assume that these will be coming online the next four years. Great, thank you.
Counsel, let me comment. This year, we've had several discussions and meetings about housing earlier in the year, housing authority discussions and so forth. And I was hopeful, I, I mentioned earlier in the fall, I think, or late summer, that I was hopeful we might be able to move something forward in a tangible way by the end of the year. And here we are. And I've not given an update since then. But with, my, my view is that with all of this under construction, new multi-family, the, the single-family housing, and obviously the headwinds of interest rates and so forth costs, I put a pause on, on trying to move anything forward or ask for your consideration in it. So here's where we are. We, we don't know the impact yet of how this is going to service our, our workforce with that doubling, essentially doubling apartments and the, the single-family having bumped and then come down a little bit. All of us just to say that it's still in the development phase of what we might could do to address this issue. It's national and not unique to us and also a very, very hard problem to address appropriately. But I just wanted you to be aware that I had not forgotten. But here we are at the end of the year without any hard tangible recommendations of look forward twenty-four developments.
Okay, moving on to short-term rentals, the twenty twenty-four ordinance. I'm going to turn to Anna and Garrett to give this update.
Yes, I just wanted to make everybody aware. The effective date is January first for two things, the new STR ordinance and then the STR fees. I just got word from MyGovNow, they are importing our very latest data. So Jan has kept up and caught up all the STR permits. So they are importing all of that STR data. And we are planning on going live with MyGovNow. Jan and Karen went to training last week with MyGov and working very diligently to make this data software transition as smooth as possible. I think that's not an oxymoron, but maybe it is. But we are planning still on, on January first, going live with, with MyGovNow and the new ordinance and the new fees. And doing a newsletter, updating the website. We are working with our GIS company. We're going to look today at that two-hundred-foot buffer tool so that staff and anyone can then pull up an STR permit and see what's in the two-hundred-foot buffer. So lots of, lots of progress here as we space, race to the end of the year.
That's big, thank you.
And we've only had three new permits since the ordinance change. So we do have on the January- So we do have on the January P and Z agenda, two STR conditional use permits. That we had been talking to these people for, for months and letting them know, hey, this is the process. And if you plan to do it, you, you gotta do it by the end of the year. So those would, would come to you then at your second meeting in January.
Thank you all for your work.
Yeah.
Progress.
Thank you.
Okay, in terms of public works projects, the East Main Street Waterline project, of course, has been completed. Garrett, when will TxDOT come back in now in the resurfacing? It, it looks like sometime after the eclipse next year.
So, so the repair work should start in January. We haven't gotten a firm date from them, but the actual overlay will occur after the eclipse.
Going this year, right?
What's that?
Going next year, right?
Yes.
Right. So moving on to the South Land Shared Use Bridge project, Garrett, you want to update?
We talked about this a little at the last meeting or, or two meetings ago. But we are still working with a contractor and our design engineer for the final approvals of the bridge. Again, that's the long lead time on this project. The bridge manufacturer is saying around five months currently. So I think we, we hope to have approval of the bridge design by the end of the year. So probably looking at May or June to start construction. The actual construction should only take around six weeks to complete.
Would we be able to see what the final design looks like?
Yes, I can share that.
Okay, that'd be great. We'll bring that back next time. And moving on to well levels and I looked at this information just this morning. Chris, do you want to talk about well levels and where we are this year compared to the last year and really what that means moving forward?
Sure. So well levels continue to slowly tick back up, which is a good thing. It's not necessarily because we've gotten a lot of rain. We've been blessed with some rain. But it's really because we haven't been pumping our wells as hard because of the, the cooler nights. And obviously, we get into this time of year and don't have the water demand for outdoor irrigation like we do during the summer. So we keep ticking up, but you know, we'll see what the rest of the fall and the winter bring and, and what the spring looks like. Because we are by no means out of the drought. We still need a lot of rainfall before, if you've driven across at Purnell's River Bridge in the last, say, thirty days. I mean, this time of year, it's typically flowing pretty well. It's barely flowing at Young Lane, Cayman Lane. I mean, it's, it's pretty sad to see this time of year. So by no means out of the drought, we continue to monitor the wells, offer levels and so forth. They do continue to come up, but not at the levels we, we would hope this time of year.
Are we still in exceptional drought?
Uh, I think we're out of the exceptional drought according to Paul Tyver's calculations, just above that.
Again, when, there, there are a lot of factors that contribute to that. And going into the fall and winter, when we don't see that water, water demand. And a lot of other pumping out of the ground, we start to see that rebound. And we, we talk about, give the statistic all the time about rainfall. And when we have a rainfall, we, it takes about ten months for that water generally to get down into the aquifer. And you only capture about four percent of what falls on the surface. So really, when you look at that real high demand time of the year, we missed our window ten months ago. Or when we, when we fast forward to, when we start using a lot of water in the late spring, early summer. Next year, we missed that window of, of rainfall, if it would have been August, September, October, really, to really see that recharge. Coming off of two months, the late summer, July and August combined, we had one tenth of an inch of rainfall. Just to put that into perspective, twenty-six days in August over a hundred degree temperatures. So we're hoping not to have a repeat of that. We've talked a lot about El Nino. I've read a lot about, recently about how the El Nino cycle is breaking up just a little bit. So it may or may not be a, a, a true cooler, wetter. Both winter and spring of next year, like we had anticipated and been talking about all year long.
Are we still tracking it about seventy-five percent of water use being outdoor landscaping?
I would say between sixty and seventy percent, yes.
And where are we in terms of our twenty percent production for stage four? Are we, are we able to track that too?
We, we, we did track that, and we tracked it all through the summer when we went into that stage, April. And early on, we were, meaning that toward the end, we were, were not quite as close to that twenty percent production. I would say on average, we probably came up just a little bit short on that percentage, but we did a lot better than stage three.
That's true. And I'll be honest, we didn't calculate it for November, so I'm not sure will be fall, but we can definitely do that.
Just overall trend, I'm just seeing a lot of sprinklers still going off at night, you know?
And one thing to note, for council and for the public watching, for the folks in the audience. Your sewer charges for residential is calculated based on a three-month winter average. And those three months are December, January, February. So if you are watering your lawn during those times, it's going to calculate a higher sewer rate for you. And starting in March, so. And the reason we do that is December, January, February typically are, are not outdoor irrigation months because of the season that we're in. And so it's a true estimate, or accurate estimate of the usage going back into the sewer collection system. Rather than, and what's being used indoors in the house and going into sewer collection system, rather than what's going on the lawn. So just, just note that as well.
I, I think that's a great soundbite for town halls and coffee, the city manager. That's, we had some pushback the other night, lady complaining that she couldn't water in, quite frankly, we're in December. I'm like, right, right, right? And it, it's all about education, you know, as we continue through this drought. And I reminded someone the other day at one of those events that we weren't just in the drought last year. The last couple of years, we've really been in this drought cycle since two thousand and seven. When you look at the data regionally and statewide. And it might take a little bit of time to get out of this. So one of the goals the council set for me for twenty twenty-four, and Chris and I talked about this just a little bit, is a closer look at that long-term water supply and our options for diversification of that, that water supply. We're a hundred percent groundwater right now. We're not just looking at diversifying our water supply necessarily, but getting better at conserving water. Our comprehensive plan, we might have ordinance amendments that would require level of fixtures for new development. And we have a couple of projects that you will see going on at the city warehouse off Friendship Lane and at city hall. That involve rainwater capture and reuse. We're talking about education programs in, in our schools, maybe hiring a full-time water education person. In fact, that was mentioned at coffee, at the last coffee with the city manager. So this is the mayor mentioned about housing. This is not an issue that is unique, credit or charge, an issue that we're dealing with statewide as we see this massive population grow. And we're in one of those areas that is growing fairly quickly in terms of population. Most of us happen east of us, all the way to I thirty-five. But those water resources are very limited in Michigan. We don't have a lot of large reservoirs and so. So again, this is something that we're going to continue to concentrate on. We've done a lot of good work. Our system integrity, we're exactly where we need to be. Just finish some very long-term projects in terms of that infrastructure, allowing us to provide that water supply to the community. These are hundred-year projects, so we've gotten that out of the way. We just need to figure out how to conserve more and diversify that supply. I know that's a lot on water, but it's, it's vital to our survival.
Well, it kind of reminds me, I just texted one of my employees to cut our sprinkler system.
There you go, Tony.
Because a lot of them just keep running and never think about it.
It's all about education, right? And the more people that, that hear us talking about this, the more people that I'm aware. Really engaged in, so thank you for.
And note, that's just on the residential side. So on the commercial side, it's every month. So your, your sewer charge is calculated every month based on the usage on the commercial side. So just on the residential side, we take a three-month winter average. Commercial side is calculated every month, so your sewer charge is based on your, your water consumption. We'll, we'll get something out detailing that to the, you know, social media. We can get something on the website. I think there's something on the website already, but we'll highlight that a little bit more.
I'm turning mine off at the meeting.
Code enforcement, go, go, go.
Okay, moving on. I, I cut one, yeah. Okay, moving on to, to parks. These are, this is just a, a, a list of parks, projects and some equipment. We showed this last time, made a little bit of progress in terms of getting quotes, getting some of these projects moving. Other big one, of course, is the restroom out at the RV park. Order was, was placed and should be installed in July twenty twenty-four, twenty-four. Okay, moving on to our December schedule. Of course, a lot going on on the square, Ice Pond, of course, every day. And the big New Year's Eve countdown coming up December thirty-first. And for those of you like me that don't stay up until midnight typically, you can enjoy the festivities a little bit earlier, the ball drop and so forth. It'll be a very nice program. A lot of local folks come out to this event. Okay, moving on to our financial update. And we show this graph every time. This is a comparison of sales tax collections, twenty twenty-one through current. And you can see the very dark red line at the top left represents the FY twenty-four since October. And the FY twenty-four actuals are down about three percent from twenty twenty-three. And what's interesting, when you look at the data, and we have a summary at the very bottom, how much sales tax collections have, have grown since twenty twenty-one. You can't, you can't see the information at the very bottom like I can see on my slide here. But in twenty twenty-one, we collected a total of seven point six million in sales tax. In twenty twenty-two, eight point seven, so one point one million increase. And then in twenty twenty-two, there you go, we collected nine point one million. So again, we're down just a little bit, but that line is holding very close to the twenty twenty-two line, blue line. Okay, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, and again, this is just a snapshot of our property tax trends from twenty fifteen to date. And you can see again, for the average taxable value of home, how at very far right that, that tax due amount has fluctuated up and down just a little bit. So again, when we talk about the Friendship Oaks mud and adding a dollar to that tax rate. This is the impact that sixteen and a half cents has. When you calculate the full tax rate or the full tax amount based on that four hundred fifty thousand dollar home, it's about a six thousand dollar tax bill. So we're about seven hundred forty-three dollars of that six thousand dollar bill, roughly.
Total is a dollar twenty-two, right? I think that's what it is with school district and county.
That sounds about right.
I think it's.
Okay, so getting into electric, electric revenues, both residential and commercial. Maybe a little bit better than average here in terms of sales. On the water side, again, we've had a fairly wet and mild fall. So we're seeing a little bit of reduction in consumption, both on the residential and commercial. This is something that we'll watch very closely. Okay, jumping into police department report. And we were up, we were trending up the last several months with calls for service and PD. We had a little bit of a decline in the month of November, you can see fourteen hundred nine calls for service versus seventeen hundred two. And a little bit more in terms of arrests, individuals bugged and total charges, again, trending down to more normal levels. Especially compared to October. Warnings versus citations. And add a lot of warnings, I don't give a lot of citations. You can see that citations are actually down also.
So we give a large percentage of warnings instead of citations. So we're being easy?
Well, it depends.
No, I, I know. I'm not trying to say, I hope I'm one of those warning sites. If that happens, well, and that's, that's, that's just interesting.
Right, and you know, we're, we're, we're a friendly community. We're, we're not after, you know, every bit of revenue. It's more about compliance than it is.
Right.
We're, we're not, we're not, we're not wanting to be known as a speed traffic coming in and.
Yeah, speed traffic, right.
The last month's numbers are, are a little off, you know, showing ten percent. We're, we are typically fifteen to twenty percent of all of our stops result in citations. So typically fifteen percent, we're a little lower on citations this. We're, just the way the numbers play out, but typically fifteen point percent are citations.
And if you can stay up there, the next couple of slides, I think we'll explain.
I just had a question. I had a citizen ask me the other day about, he's, he's the word quota, but quota. So I, I'm aware the city doesn't do that, correct? We just, we're monitoring behavior, trying to correct behavior. It's not about quotas. It's not about hitting a certain revenue threshold with fines.
No, absolutely not. No quotas, no thresholds, no fine amounts. We're concentrating on slowing people down to reduce crashes and accidents.
As I see our city attorney looking very strongly at it, says we're talking about that. So again, traffic accidents, fifty-four in the month. November forty-three versus eleven major, minor versus eleven major activity. So criminal investigation activity, again, down just a little bit from the average. And then this will give you an idea in terms of the criminal investigation division cases. The different categories and, and the numbers associated with those of criminal mischief. Chief, you wanted to find that?
We, I did want to comment on this slide. I get a lot of questions, and I'm sure a lot of, a lot of y'all do, as well as other staff. They question in, in reference to cases, violent crime, you know, how much violent crime do we have as violent crime arise? So the answer to that is no. I mean, we're pretty consistent on our violent crimes that do occur in the community. But these are our top, criminal mischief, theft, burglary, fraud, assault. So you know, a lot of the criminal mischief could be at the parks or around town. You know, theft from Walmart is huge. Most of those thefts happen at Walmart, it's just a reality. And other businesses on Main Street, like the lower rate burglary, most of that is not residential. That is vehicle burglary, vehicles left unlocked, people taking stuff out of the cabs or in the back, you know, stuff like that. So frauds, we, we've been pushing out a lot of information in the paper and social media, scams. That's where the scams come in, you know, go buy us some gift cards or send us some money because your grandchild is in jail and all those types of faults. Than just assaults. The assaults are what they are. So this, as far as, you know.
Chief, have you had any particular uptick in people who don't live here? Hanging out, like the, the homeless, that issue that they have in California and Austin and so?
No, no, we, we have not.
Yeah, because I was asked that the other day, if that's ever, if that's coming here or has been.
Our.
Our, our true homeless population fluctuates, you know, three to four somewhere around there. Two of whom are local and by choice, um, they have places to stay, family in town. They have organizations, churches, nonprofits, you know, offering, but they, they do not want to accept that. And so two of them are local by choice, and then we have kind of the, the transient things comes in, you know, comes out. But, but our, our homeless population is, is not increasing and it's not, uh, you know, from out of town or state.
Okay, animal control, again, just a snapshot at, at the breakdown, dogs versus cats. And also, um, adoptions and dead animals.
Assuming the dead ones are a lot of deer.
There's a lot of deer, a lot, they, they pick up a few every day. So try to, try to keep the roadways clean before they create events.
Thank you, any questions on ED report? Okay, thanks, chief. Moving on to fiery EMS, another fairly busy month with three hundred forty-nine incidents. We had three hundred eighty-seven, uh, last month, um, November minimum. Daily number of, of six up to eighteen maximum. So again, you can see moving through the month, uh, the ups and downs here, average of twelve calls per day.
And of course, anytime you have EMS, fire department goes too, right?
Right, and chief can speak to that. In fact, chief, can you come up, you might want to add to some of these slides here. And again, um, as we look at activities since January, and this is something that chief Fizzle talked about during the budget process, going back, um, even to, to previous years. You know, this, the number of incidents per month is generally increasing. Again, we were up to three eighty-seven, that coincides with police activity that we saw, a lot of the special events that we have in town. A lot of the folks that we have here during the October timeframe. But back down to roughly the average line, uh, in November, but generally, uh, this line is trending up.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, uh, what was your question? Uh, Tony?
What now?
What was your question?
Oh, uh, that when ambulance goes out or EMS, fire department brings them, it was out too.
Well, uh, not, not every time.
Oh.
So, uh, we have our calls when they come into our nine-one-one, uh, dispatch center. Uh, we, we have those prioritized, anything to do with, uh, heart, respiratory, anything that may be, uh, very serious when we get there, then we will send a, a smaller unit out with, another paramedic with ambulance, but they're normally, there may be occasions where they're in, in the engine with three people that they have to go when they're out in, in, uh, you know, at the other station or something to that nature. But for the most part, it's, it's a priority call from the EMS standpoint. That's when the extra personnel are needed and respond with the ambulance.
Okay, moving on, and the, the days of the week are not on this slide, I believe this starts with Monday.
Yes.
So you can see again, the heat map, the, uh, days where we have, um, the most activity. It's really spread out over, uh, majority of the week, Wednesday through the weekend.
You, you'll also notice that the majority of our calls are between seven AM and, uh, about eight, eight to nine in the evening.
So your transfers are still up?
Yes. Uh, we meet regularly with the hospital, uh, with Dr. Pardon and talk about the transfers. Uh, they have assured us that moving forward that they were going to be keeping more patients. Uh, in fact, they are keeping more patients and there are, according to the hospital, they are getting more patients from the burny area, uh, comfort area and things of that nature. Um, and, and their, their issue is just like ours, it's staffing. Trying to get additional nurses to be able to put more people in, uh, you know, in the hospital here with the rooms that they have.
It's, uh, they shut down wings to avoid costs.
So they're what?
They're shutting down wing.
Oh.
To reduce cost.
Yeah, I'll, I'm not.
No, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to, uh, brush fires season. Again, we have had a number of controlled burns recently due to the moisture, seen a lot of that around. And then a heat map regarding fiery EMS activity, concentration in town, uh, you can see, and Tony, this will give you an idea of, um, fiery EMS, um, response out in the county. The red and blue.
Again, when you look at this chart, what you'll find is, uh, the, the majority of our time is, is spent in the county uh, versus the, the city when it comes to overall calls, but the majority of our calls are actually in the city limits.
And then aid given versus aid received, generally when we move out west in the county in the Harper area, uh, that is where we, we, we give aid in response to incidents there. As we move east down the two ninety-four door, uh, stone wall, we, we receive a lot of, um, aid, uh, from that, that department. And then a, a heat map here showing again, the concentration really, uh, within the city limits. Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
City department openings, and this number has moved, uh, up and down just a little bit. I believe we started the year with, uh, eighteen openings. And I, I believe, chief, uh, for our, I'm showing, uh, three open positions in the police department, we have five currently. So, uh, we can bump that up to, right.
That change by the moment or something?
Well, it changed, right. So we have, uh, we have sixteen, uh, positions currently open. Couple of physicians, uh, I'll, I'll mention, uh, professional physicians in engineering or staff engineer. We've had that position open for about nine months now, and we've not, not had a qualified applicant. And this is a relatively high-paying position. Also, we've had, uh, several applicants for our senior planner historic preservation officer, uh, position. And this, this is also a, a fairly senior position, uh, that, that pays very well. And, uh, these individuals have had a hard time making, um, living here work with the salary that we're offering. So this is something that we're running into, um, you know, as we have these professional physicians. Okay, moving on, and Shelley put this information together just to give the council an idea. We're not bragging about how many meetings we've had, but we've had a, a lot of, of council meetings, boards and commissions. You can see forty-five, uh, agenda package posted for city council, twenty-two notices of forum. A, a lot of those are of town halls that we've been holding, uh, their events, uh, PNZ charter review. You can see down through Market Square redevelopment. And in twenty twenty-three, through this agenda, seven hundred three individual agenda items total uh, on all of council meetings. Hundred and six total packets, again, uh, as we have implemented this new software to develop agendas. It does save a lot of time, uh, efficiencies and so forth, and minutes taken for all of those ones. So great job, Shelley, keeping all that together and going. And that is the end of my update, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
British Ford Citizen University update. So we did close the application process, uh, on the thirteenth of the month for our British Ford Citizen University, uh, first class. And we have received thirty-five applications. Those are all qualified applications, Shelley, at this point, they all live, they, they meet all qualifications. So I know we have talked to the council about, um, the, the council potentially making uh, the selection of fifteen or twenty applicants. Just to remove any and all bias from the process, what we might propose to the council is that we randomly select from the pool of male and female applicants, twenty individuals uh, that all meet the qualifications, uh, in the application to form the class moving forward. Love to get individual council, um, members' thoughts on this, if that's something that you would like to do or you would like to make that selection yourself. Again, our plan is to start this class in late January for about eleven months. Thirty-five applicants, uh, we'd like to select.
I personally would love to see the council stay out of selection. This isn't a political thing, this is about educating the public, so I'd love the random.
I, I like the random as well, but I think diversity is a huge thing for us. I'm just curious, seventy, thirty, fifty, fifty, where are we with that?
On what demographic are you talking about, race or sex or religion?
All the above, I just want to have a good representation of our community and not one pocket. I'll leave you in your capable hands to do that, but I'd like to see a lot of diversity across that.
Sure. Fifty, fifty. And we'll provide the list to the council before we make that selection, if you have any thoughts or input. Based on what you're seeing, uh, we more, we're going to have to incorporate that. But we're real excited about kicking off that class, um, a lot of discussion about it. Also, the, um, the police academy, we're letting folks know that there's an opportunity there. They want to be involved in, um, a, a city program to learn more about the police department.
Just want to thank our city secretary for the leadership in putting this together, thank you.
Great job, Shelley. That concludes my reporting.
Item ten, items for future agenda, looking at the works, that spreadsheet.
And it looks like right now, we don't have much plugged in for the January second council meeting. That's typically the case of the holidays. Okay. Anything further on that, council? All right, we have two executive session items today, one is, um, a real estate issue and another is, uh, an annual evaluation.
I move that we go to executive session.
Second.
Motion second to go into executive session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. There, we need to open the door.
I opened it, please.
Okay. All right, we're back in.
Nobody out there, huh?
We're back in regular session, we left executive session at eleven fifty. Yeah. All right. We had, we had one piece of business to transact and open session relative to executive. Motion?
I move that we give Clinton Bailey a three percent raise effective immediately.
Second.
Motion and second to authorize a three percent effective immediately raise relative to annual performance evaluation. And as a word of thank you and appreciation, any further discussion or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned.